All right, good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Fruta City Council. It is now seven oh two P M. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Bremen.
Here.
Counselor Perser is excused absent. Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry.
Here.
Counselor Miller is also excused absent. Counselor Hansi.
Here.
All right, our next item on our agenda is a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you please stand with us. We'd like to take a moment to allow all faiths and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did have one change to the agenda since the packet went out. We moved an item from consent to the legislative public hearings, and that is item seven B two. The ordinance adopting the International Energy Conservation Code, two thousand eighteen edition.
Okay. We have a motion.
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
I.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our proclamations and presentations. We've got one presentation tonight, and that's the for the teacher students of the month for December, and we've got Shellody Elementary School here with us tonight. And so I got some students to recognize. And so I'm going to come out front. It makes it a little easier. And I've asked Counselor Cry to help me with this. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the recognition of each student, and then I'm going to ask the students to stay up here because I know a lot of parents and teachers here are probably going to want to get photos. So with that, our first one is Noah Hackley, and so he's being recognized by the Fruta City Council for outstanding academic achievement and excellent excellence. And so if you'd please come up, Noah. All right, did you want to come up and get a certificate? All right, that's all right. Thank you. All right, the next one is Emma Felt, and so we'd just like to recognize her for their academic achievement and excellence. We're striking two. Yeah. Congratulations. Emma, if you'd like to stay up here. All right, our next one that we'd like to recognize is Dylan Thompson for his academic achievement and excellence. All right, and then we have Arabella Watson. Recognize her. We've got Stratton Doyle. Deb, I'm missing a, we also give out a rec center pass, and there's not one on that one. I don't know if it's, so, so we give out a rec center pass, and then we're giving them all of I heart Fruta buttons. So and then I've got Hagan Zollinger. And then we've got April Mossberger. You look a little old for this. All right, so let's give him a big hand. Then before they go sit down, does anybody want to come up closer and get a photo? Because we don't want to miss the opportunity. You can crop out the city council later out of those photos, just so you know. All right, another hand for them. So I think the one in the red didn't have a rec center pass, so we'll have to get that.
You want to pick?
I got one. Thanks.
All right, we like, it's great to see our room full. So I'm not sure which, right in the fourth row back in the red on the right.
What's your line?
Right there. All right, this is one of the great things we get to do as a city is to recognize our students and our partnership with D fifty one. It's great to see everybody here filling the room. So we appreciate that. So with that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this is time. And again, I will say this, if you guys want to stay around for a whole meeting, we'd love that. But if you want to, if you want to get up and leave now, you have that opportunity as well. We don't, don't want to twist anybody's arm. Yep.
Where's everybody going?
This guy Stan.
The slow guy.
Say something.
You're usually a couple of hours.
Is the aspect of.
Oh, yes, son.
All right, this gives everybody else the opportunity to move up closer if they want. All right, with that, we're going to move into public participation. So this time is set aside for the council to listen to comments from the public on items that do not appear on the agenda. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda, now would be the time to do that. All right. If you please step up and state your name and address for the record, and then we just ask you to limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Kelly. My name is Kelly, and I'm a resident of the Vineyards at Country Creek subdivision. And back in October, city crews were in our community fulfilling sidewalk repair program commitments, and I just have one thing to say about that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kelly, for coming in and letting us know that. All right, is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on our agenda for public participation? Yeah, she could have. Is there anybody online that you see that is wanting to speak?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, then we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. They'll all be approved by one motion. So we're going to open that up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on an item on our consent agenda, now would be your opportunity to do that. All right, I'm seeing none here. Are you seeing anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online.
All right, we'll, we'll close public comment and bring you back to council with any questions, or do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public hearing. So we've got several public hearings tonight. We've got three quasi judicial, just so everybody knows how we're working those. We'll have a staff report, then we go into the applicant, then we'll open it up to public comment. And then once we close public comment, then we'll bring it back to council for any questions or comments on that side. So our first quasi judicial hearing is a new liquor license application, and so we're going to turn it over to our deputy city clerk Deb Woods to present on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk, presenting the hotel and restaurant liquor license application for Mescalera LLC doing business as El Mescal Family Mexican Restaurant and Bar. This is a new liquor license. The license that was at this location previously was not eligible for a transfer since it had expired. The application and the fees were submitted to the city clerk's office on November fourth. And notice of public hearing was posted in the window at the restaurant, and it was published in the Daily Sentinel, as you will notice in your council packet, in the preliminary findings. I would like to mention that this application was filed for concurrent review, which means that a copy of the application goes off to state liquor enforcement so that they can be reviewing it while the local authority is doing its review and approval of the application. It just moves the process along a little bit quicker. So there are two things that the council needs to consider when approving a liquor license. And that is, one, the character of the applicants, and two is needs of the neighborhood. Concerning the character of the applicants, background checks were conducted on the three individuals who are on the liquor license. And they are in our audience with us tonight. The the background checks resulted in no crimes of moral turpitude, meaning that there are no grounds to deny the application based on character of the applicants. Concerning the needs of the neighborhood, a survey was submitted to the city clerk's office that was signed by thirty six individuals, and thirty four of those signatures marked that they were in support of the application approved. And two had no opinion, although I'm guessing that they just didn't read the form closely enough to see what, what they needed to do. So that is basically the extent of my presentation tonight. Your recommended motion is in the council packet. And Attorney John Howell with the law firm of Hoskin, Farina, and Camp is here as the applicant's representative, as well as the three applicants that I mentioned previously. There are Anselmo, Pablo, and David. And so I will turn it over to Mr. Howell for any additional comments he may have.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Kincaid and council members. As was stated, my name is John Howell. I represent the applicant El Mescalera doing business as El Mescal, the family Mexican restaurant and bar. This is the second El Mescal that the family has started. The first one is over in the Red Roof Inn building, and started earlier this year. But apart from that, the family's had a long, long history in the restaurant business. Anselmo is the owner of the two Tequila's restaurants in Grand Junction. David has worked in the restaurant business for a long, long time, as has Pablo. And then also, actually, also with us tonight is Ruby Munoz, who did the survey. So so we have David, Anselmo, Pablo, and Ruby. And longstanding restaurateurs and are looking forward to opening the El Mescal in Fruta at four thirty nine Highway six and fifty. I think just the one thing to comment on the survey, I think that was very informative of the needs and desires of the neighborhood, thirty four in favor and none against. So we've asked that the council approve the liquor license and subject to state approval as well. Thank you. Any questions?
What we're going to do is we'll open up to public comment, and then we'll come back for any questions that council has. Pablo, want to say anything or no? Okay. All right. Well, so that's it, John? Okay, then we're going to open it up to public comment, and then we'll come to council on if we have any questions. We'll let you know. So with that, we're going to open up this to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity to do so. All right, I'm seeing none. Are you seeing anybody online that would like to speak on this item?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions related to this item? All right, I'm hearing none. What?
I was going to make a motion.
All right.
Hold on, I want to make one comment. I just want to commend you guys. My wife and I went in there to have lunch and earlier this week, that is by far the best that building has ever looked. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you for doing what you've done. It looks phenomenal, and the food was terrific. So, yeah.
I move we approve the issuance of a hotel and restaurant malt Venus and Spiritus liquor license for Mescalera LLC doing business as El Mescal Family Mexican Restaurant and Bar located Highway six and fifty.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Yep. All right, with that, we're going to move into our second hearing. It's ordinance twenty twenty two dash thirty one. It's a second reading. An ordinance adding one fifty seven North Plum Street to the City Register of Historic Sites, and we've got our city planner Henry Hempel here to present.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Like mentioned, my name is Henry, city planner here. I'll be giving this presentation on the second reading of this ordinance tonight. Obviously, the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash thirty one. This is a request to place a structure on the local registry located at one fifty seven North Plum Street. We don't see too many of these come before the city council. These are usually acknowledged by the property owner. However, the city can acknowledge certain structures or places based on the historic relevance or relevance for for meeting the land use criteria. But this one before you tonight was submitted by Michelle Kools, who is the property owner at this address and was kind of jointly supported with Steve and Denise Height, who are also members of our community and do own a property that's on the local register. A land development application twenty twenty two dash thirty three. And it's a request to add the property located at one fifty seven North Plum Street to the Fruta Historic Registry. There are legal notice requirements with regards to this land development application. All were completed in accordance with the applicable laws and legal notice regulations that we have for the city of Fruta. The map there on the right shows the buffer of the subject property. It's three hundred and fifty feet. We send out postcards to those property owners, letting them know that there's a pending land development application and what it is and where to, where to come if they have any concerns or questions or comments. Hearing process, it's adopted by ordinance by the city council, but first it needs to go to both the Historic Preservation Board and the Planning Commission. Those two are recommending bodies, and then the council is the final decision on the application based on the recommendations, the land use code criteria, and public participation. So those, the Historic Preservation Board meeting was November seventh, they recommended approval. The Planning Commission also heard this application and made a recommendation of approval to the council. And then we had the first reading on November fifteenth, and the second reading of the ordinance is tonight for decision before you. The plat is an original plat. It was back in eighteen eighty four. So back then, the founders all got together, surveyed the land and the orchards and everything, broke it down into these parcels. And the one that's before you tonight is highlighted in that yellow part, but that's a pretty cool plat map that we have in our office and is pretty, pretty unique to the city of Fruta when you look at kind of how those, those lots were plotted back then and, and what you kind of see now when you go through the subdivision process. Here's the subject location aerial photo. And then I've got some pictures of the the house. These are also in the staff report as well. So the requirements are set forth in seventeen point two nine oh six oh. They need to meet one of the criteria, and we'll just go forward to those. And this is a structure that's being nominated. The structure must be at least fifty years old, which that accomplishes over a hundred years old and must meet one or more criteria that I'm going to show now. So architecturally exemplifies specific elements of an architectural style or period. You can see in the applicant's presentation or their narrative, they do show and explain kind of the architectural heritage and what was going on at that time and why there's actually a few structures in town that look just like this, maybe different color and different add-ons. The geographic location we've shown you with the plat, it's on an original lot plotted with the plat of Fruta back in eighteen eighty four, and that has not been changed at all. And then the physical integrity, so it retains its original design features, materials, and character. The thing about it is there, it was originally brick, and they put some siding on it to protect it. But the interpretation and the narrative explains that if that were to be removed, you'd see the original character of the structure itself. So that's still intact, and it's in the original location as it was built. It has never been moved. And those are the criteria that staff has reviewed based on the application and talking to the Historic Preservation Board, the members there, and the property owner itself to come to the decision tonight. So with that, keep it short and sweet. The staff is recommending that the council adopt ordinance twenty twenty two dash thirty one, placing this property located at one fifty seven North Plum Street on the local sites, structures, and districts. Motion and recommendation can be found on page ninety five of the council packet.
I see the applicant isn't here. They're not online either.
No, I reached out to Michelle Kools. She was not able to make it here tonight.
Okay, all right. With that, then we're going to open it up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, I'm hearing none here. Is there anyone online?
No comments online.
All right, with that, we're going to bring you back to council. Are there any questions or comments? All right, then do we have a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance twenty twenty two dash thirty one, placing the property located at one fifty seven North Plum Street on the City Register of Historic Sites, Structures, and Districts.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, we'll move into our next quasi judicial hearing. It's for Raptor Crossing Plan Unit Development, ordinance twenty twenty two dash twenty nine, and we've got our city planner Henry Hempel here to present on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, members of council. My name is Henry. I'll be giving the staff presentation on Raptor Crossing preliminary P U D plan and ordinance to zone the property to planning and development. My computer has seemed to not be working right now to share my screen. So that's going to make it difficult to share this presentation.
We tried turning it off and turning it back.
Maybe.
Three times.
He's got his fancy. His fancy. Not you. Us mere mortals over here.
We thought we were going to get out earlier tonight.
Easy target. Yeah, yeah, I get it.
There it is. Glad somebody else takes it every once in a while.
Yeah, that's okay. That's all right. All right, cool.
Won't tell you that Dan's laughing in the back of the room, but.
Get it together, let's. No, it's all good. Okay. So again, this ordinance plus preliminary P U D plan. So this one, like the other, you don't, we don't see these a whole lot because they're very much unique to a property-specific development. And so this is a proposal for a P U D zone, which is a planning and development zone. And the way I like to explain it to people that come to the front counter and developers is it's more like a customized zone. So you have the underlying zone, which is C two and the applicants proposing a unique project that doesn't necessarily fit into our zoning matrix. So the planning and development zone does allow for some flexibility. And in, in that flexibility, you know, why are they asking for that? Which is why we have so many criteria to consider. The most important part of that is the consideration of our, our comprehensive plan, and does it really make sense? So before you tonight is the P U D guide and the zoning that goes with the property. And then attached to that to run concurrently, which I'd like to do, is present the preliminary P U D plan, which is more or less the subdivision of the parcel itself. So these are grouped in the staff report as an overall review, which is why we've kind of grouped it together for public hearing tonight so that we can all make sense of what's being proposed. So this is the land development application twenty twenty two dash thirty. Raptor Crossing is a preliminary P U D plan. Cart Planning is a representative who's with us tonight. And the property is located at eight fifty three Raptor Road. And like I mentioned before, the current zone is commercial two or C two. I touch on legal notice. This is also required in our code. All have been completed within the required timeframe, meeting the fifteen day minimum requirement before the planning commission meeting. And then also with the zoning ordinance, there's a first reading and a second reading. The first reading is to introduce it and the set a public hearing date and directs the city clerk to publish legal notice. That happened on November fifteenth, inviting the public to tonight's meeting, which we also did with the legal notice postcards, the site posting and the legal notice newspaper posting on September twenty third. Here's a location of the legal notice sign placed on the property, and then you can see there, there's the, the postcard buffer surrounding the subject. Need to go out three hundred and fifty feet or get twenty unique property owners, whichever comes first. Typically, you get the three hundred and fifty. That gets you the twenty at least, but in this case, some of the parcels nearby are pretty large, and so we had to buffer out even further. So the P U D process, it's, there's a lot more to it than just a standard zoning application for a rezone or just a subdivision application. So we've got a three, three-step process. The first is a concept plan, which is an optional process. And those that are here tonight that were here back in February, you may remember seeing some of this application before you. The applicant proposed this application before you without any really solid decision-making or binding decisions from the council and or the planning commission. But it was basically just to get feedback. Hey, what do you think about this idea? And if, if, if it's something we should entertain, we'll go, you know, further on the process and lead us to the preliminary plan stage. So that's where we're at tonight. We're at the preliminary plan stage, and this is a required stage. The planning commission makes its recommendation to the city council like it normally would. And then as part of the preliminary P U D plan, which is the subdivision application, the city council shall enact an ordinance zoning the subject property, P U D or planning and development. So that is why we're seeing tonight the preliminary P U D plan, which is the subdivision of the application, and then the zoning ordinance itself. And then if the city council votes in favor of this application and the zoning ordinance, then the final P U D plan would be required to be submitted within a hundred and eighty days of tonight's meeting, and the application itself is reviewed and then. and the application itself is reviewed administratively and then is also sent out for review to review agencies, make sure review comments are addressed adequately. And the city's administration would carry out the zoning ordinances like we normally would with our land use code for other applications and similar to this, so. That's the PUD process kind of in a nutshell and we're here in the middle process tonight to discuss the preliminary PUD plan and zoning ordinance. So zoning map, C two is the zone, we have the lagoon property which the city owns. And then there's James M. Robb State Park to the south with a mix of commercial uses to the east. You have gas station, coffee shop, dentist office and an auto mechanic's shop, so there's quite a few mix of different commercial uses in this area, but you can see the shape and the size of this property is pretty unique, which is a driver for the PUD process and the request for flexibility to kind of design a project that would make sense and essentially through the review buffer between these commercial uses and the lagoon property, which we have a concept plan for, design of kind of a flex area, commercial, residential and recreational. So here's a layout of the proposed subdivision, you can see north is to the right of me and the interstate borders that on the north side and these are essentially conveyable lots for Class A motor coaches and there's thirty-nine proposed lots with a shared driveway, which is that Raptor Crossing, this is a, this is a private drive, nothing that the city would own and maintain and everything in there would be private, that includes the water line, the sewer line and the road infrastructure and all the landscaping and other utilities like that that would kind of typically be shared between entities if it were publicly conveyed right-of-way and all that stuff, so. That's the layout of the subdivision and the applicant is gonna touch base more on kind of the the ins and outs of how these Class A motor coaches get in and out of there and what you would typically see with the development, similar to what you saw with the constant. So there's nine review criteria that need to be considered, this is carried out in two sections of our code. Chapter nineteen, so seventeen point nine, we know is our planning and development chapter. Then chapter seventeen point two one is our subdivisions chapter. Combining those in the review criteria and then bringing a recommendation from staff to both the planning commission and tonight with the city council. So the lot sizes that are proposed to be created range anywhere from about twenty-five hundred to thirty-one hundred square feet. The deviation in that lot size based on the C two zone, which has a minimum new lot or subdivided lot of five thousand square feet, so there's a bit of a deviation from there, which the planning and development process would allow. And then the private street, like I mentioned before, is a twenty-foot asphalt width, excuse me, with two and a half foot shoulder and typically with a shared driveway, we would require that it be or a private street be built out like a full street section, so they look and act the same. And that is to ensure that if there were ever any fallouts from the ownership and maintenance of that shared drive, that the city could take that on essentially like a park that can no longer be maintained by an HOA, we would then take that on and provide those services, but that's what our code says, hey, private streets need to be the same as our city streets requirements, makes it easier for our city engineer and review team to review those and move forward, so that's, that's what we have for this private street. And then there's fencing proposed, so in the PUD guide, which is exhibit B to the ordinance, the fencing proposed and the applicant has a picture of it tonight, is proposed to go around the whole property to give it kind of that buffer, hey, this is this development, it's special, it's planned unit development and it gives it a little bit more character. There's an RV park off of the interstate, I seventy, as you get off of twenty-four road that has a fence with it and that would be the similar height to give you kind of an idea of what it would look like. So continuing with the review criteria compatibility is an important one to consider and is this use compatible with existing and allowed uses in the vicinity? So we've got a number of different uses, like I mentioned before. This one would be considered compatible, you've got hotels and motels nearby. This residential would be kind of transient, it would come and go when these campers wouldn't be there or these Class A motor coaches would not be there permanently for perpetuity. There are time limits on how old these can be and the condition they can be in, the subdivision is run entirely by an HOA. Review comments received, we did have a number of those received. The Colorado Parks and Wildlife did express some concern with how wildlife would interact with the development and as mentioned in the minutes and highlighted in the minutes from the planning commission meeting. Touch on this is the wildlife and the Colorado Parks Service would obviously be plugged in as the development progressed to the final plan stage and then addressing those comments is the duty of the applicant to satisfy those. It's mostly just with animals being used, like pets being, you know, howling about and some issues with maybe deer crossing or eagles flying by swooping down and snagging some smaller dogs. Those kinds of concerns were raised by Colorado Parks and Wildlife. No additional like comments or really any concerns from other agencies have been brought forward to us, but obviously if this were to move on, we would need to water, Excel Energy, the fire department, all back into the review to ensure adequate resolution of any review comments. And like I mentioned before, this proposing a use that actually may work well with the lagoon property we have, the master, kind of the concept plan that we adopted a few years ago, that has a mix of different uses, commercial, residential and recreation to take advantage of the Colorado River and it's really, really a unique shape, it's two hundred and fourteen feet in width by thirteen hundred feet in length, so it's long and narrow and it makes it really challenging for other types of uses, commercial uses. And so the flexibility and creativity of allowing a planned unit development to go through the process and be considered may allow this property to actually develop. I touched on review comments, there have been no written public comments and no verbal or public comments were received at the planning commission meeting. And if I recall correctly, no issues or comments, all comments were received with the concept plan staging. So next steps, if approved by the council, the applicant has a hundred and eighty days to submit a final PUD plan. The final PUD plan is sent out for review to ensure compliance with review comments and the decision is made administratively and staff would carry out any additional conditions imposed by the council if they see fit. And then to conclude the presentation, Mr. Mayor, I have two of the recommendations, one for the PUD zoning ordinance and then the other one is for the preliminary PUD plan, so that's a subdivision of the property, both of these recommendations are on page one seventeen of the council packet and I'm not gonna read them word for word. But that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor, and we can turn the time back over to you.
Okay, we have the applicant here, so we'll turn it over to the applicant. Henry, you gotta get his presentation ready.
Alright. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Ty Johnson with Cart Planning and Landscape Architecture. We are the app developers representatives for the application before you this evening. For the record, our address is seven three four Main Street in Grand Junction. As always, staff's done an excellent job presenting the request, especially as it relates to approval criteria, both in the staff report and in his presentation. So I'm gonna avoid repeating all that and kind of mostly just focus on the programming of the development and the look and feel of the development. As Henry mentioned, this is a difficult lot for development for a couple reasons, it's long and slender. That's one reason why it's challenging for development, oftentimes you'll see lots shaped this way turn into storage units or potentially auto-oriented uses where you have maybe a retail front with a lot of storage behind it, whether it's vehicles or parts. Another reason this lot is difficult and challenging from a development standpoint is we have quite a few encumbrances on the property, so there is a large twenty-five foot wide gas easement on the western boundary that transitions to thirty feet about halfway through and then there's also a large easement on the north end, so a lot of constraints here. We feel we've come up with a creative solution for the property and we're excited to present this to you this evening. As Henry mentioned, this is a very, very unique development, we're not able to pose this development within an existing zoning code. There's not a development like this in the Grand Valley, there are developments like this across the country and I'm gonna go in and show some pictures of those throughout this presentation. So it is a luxury Class A motor coach community. I'll get into that a little bit more, it's not an RV park and it's not really a traditional subdivision either. The reason it's not an RV park is because, as Henry mentioned, these lots are owned and conveyed and there is strict use requirements, you can't have a camper pull behind, it's a very specific use and it's a Class A motor home. And a Class A motor coach or motor home, it's a larger, higher-end recreational vehicle, they're twenty-six to forty-five feet in length. The average cost is around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they can be a little less than that and they can go up over a million dollars. These two images here are kind of classic-looking Class A motor homes. There's more interior living space in a Class A motor coach, increased towing capacity. Again, not a trailer, not a mobile home, not a park model or, you know, an RV, but a designated Class A motor home. Henry alluded to this too, there is gonna be a restriction on the, how old these motor homes can be in the development and that's fifteen years. So if I owned a lot and my motor home was ten years old, I'd effectively have five more years before I needed to upgrade that motor. And that will be in the CCNRs, it's in the PUD guide as well, it'll all be enforced through the HOA. So I'm gonna go into some images of some other Class A motor coach communities throughout the country here, just to give you an idea kind of what they look and feel like. This one here is in Naples, Florida, all these are gonna be the same configuration in the sense that they are lots, they are owned and they are specific to Class A motor homes, you'll see some, you know, here they have a little bit built structure behind the concrete pad and you'll see that throughout some of these photos, here's one in Montana. One down the road in Moab. And then here's an example from Palm Springs. So again, this is such a unique development, there's so many deviations from the underlying zoning code, I mean, it's really more important to focus on what you can do here, because there's not much, there's so many use limitations, there's not much that you can do as a lot owner, what you can do is have residential use of a Class A motor home. You can park one commuter vehicle, typically you might have noticed that in the images, they're gonna tow a Jeep or a commuter vehicle behind these motor homes. You can park a commuter vehicle, a motorcycle and a golf cart and that's it, there's no outdoor storage of any kind beyond that. There is also going to be, they're gonna allow construction of one accessory structure per lot, similar to what we saw on some of those images. So that's a small space intended to complement the living space of the motor coach. In this community, I think they're typically, they refer to them as casitas. But it could be, you know, just a little built structure, it could be a pergola, shade structure, outdoor kitchen fireplace, just again, a space intended to complement the living space of the motor coach. And so I just wanna show some examples of what this could look like on the site, again, these are from different motor home developments throughout the country and, you know, you see outdoor kitchens, shade structures, pergolas, things of that nature. So here's a typical building envelope for the development. You're gonna see, so you have the street down there, you have a concrete pad, there's gonna be a pedestal for hookups for water sewer electricity. And that's where, that pedestal is gonna exist in a fifteen-foot utility easement dedicated to the HOA, maintained by the HOA if anything goes awry there. And then their building envelope is gonna be behind that, it's about roughly three hundred and seventy square feet, it's a small space. There's gonna be five-foot side setbacks, a three-foot rear setback and then that front setback is just gonna be defined by the presence of that fifteen-foot utility easement, so if the owner opts to build some sort of structure there, they will have the ability to do that. And again, you have the setbacks listed here, there's gonna be a twelve-foot height limit on that, that's, all that is in the PUD guide. Just touch on trails and open space here, this is the landscape plan. You'll see there is a common clubhouse building, kind of in the middle, next to that cul-de-sac turnaround area. Some parking there, a little grass area, walking path. Overall, it's one point two acres of open space and seven hundred and forty feet of trail, which exceeds the minimum required amount by the Fruit of Land Use Code. I guess I can touch on, you know, Henry was talking about Colorado Parks and Wildlife, so they will be permitted to have dogs, they will be leashed, they'll be required to be leashed. I believe the CCNRs, there's no other type of pets allowed other than dogs and I think it defines it as a reasonable amount as determined by the board. So, you know, typically be one or two dogs would be the max there. That'll be determined by the board though and they will be required to be leashed. So, let's go back to this real quick, actually. You'll see the hammerhead there on the north end of the project, so that, that's intended for a couple different things, that's intended for motor homes to turn around in. They're gonna be backing into these spots. If you have a lot on the east side, you're gonna turn around in that hammerhead and then you're gonna back into your lot, if you have a lot, if you have a lot on the west end, you won't need to turn around, the other function of this hammerhead is to provide emergency access to the Fruit of Lagoon property. So you'll see that stubbed out to the west and we are working on with Sam, city engineer, to define where that emergency access is gonna be in the Fruit of Lagoon property. So here's just a maneuvering exhibit to show you, this came up in the planning commission meeting, there was some discussion about this and so we created this exhibit to show how these vehicles, the what we're showing here is the largest Class A motor home, forty-five feet plus a fifteen-foot vehicle plus two feet for the hitch, so it's sixty-two feet. That's the worst case, so to speak, the largest vehicle that's gonna be maneuvering throughout this development. And so we created this exhibit to show how these folks would maneuver in order to, you know, the people who are gonna be doing this maneuver are gonna be owners on the east side because they're gonna have to turn around and then back into those lots. So this just shows ample room and we actually, we widen the hammerhead a little bit throughout this exercise because we realized we needed maybe a little more buffering space and we have area there to the north, so we just went ahead and widened the hammerhead a little bit. Short-term rentals, so this came up in the planning commission meeting and we had a good discussion about it and I spoke with the developer at length about this and what his vision is for this. So no short-term or long-term rentals of any kind, so in other words, if I own a lot there and I have my motor home there, I cannot rent that to anyone. There is a limited opportunity for a lot owner to swap with another lot owner of another Class A motor home community. And that would be subject to approval through the HOA, you would essentially submit a request to do that. Again, they're gonna be bringing their own motor home, it's gonna have to comply with all the requirements of that development. Happy to, you know, answer more questions on that again, but again, the intent is really just to allow some process, apparently it's somewhat common in these communities to do. Apparently it's somewhat common in these communities to do lot swaps. So that's the intent of that process. There's no intent for any sort of rental, traditional rental whatsoever. Financing, so Henry touched on fencing a little bit. We have requested a 10 foot height limit on the fence because we do have I-70 to the north. We have a auto oriented use to the east and the developer intends to, to do, he's not entirely sure, but eight to 10 feet on the east and the north. I spoke to him today. His intention is actually to do more of a transparent wrought iron fence on the west, especially given, you know, the vision for Fruit of Lagoon property and for it. So we don't really want to wall off that area. More interested in creating some buffering from I-70 and from that auto oriented use to the east. He's looking at doing a very high-end steel fence. And so this is, this is the fence he wants to do on the north and the east end. He's received a quote. It is very, very expensive, but he's excited about this fence. And this is, this is what he wants to do on the north and east end. That concludes my presentation. I'm sure you guys have some questions. Happy to, to answer about the development.
All right, Ty, we're going to open it up to public comment first and then we'll come back to council. So with that, we're going to open this up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, I'm hearing none. Are we seeing anybody online?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments or who wants to start?
I just have one comment. I really appreciate you coming back and answering the concerns and questions that we had in previous meetings. Thank you very much. And I do appreciate you looking at, reevaluating like the hammerhead and be like, oh, wait a minute. We need to modify that. I appreciate all that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have a question about the, the building, the structure. You mentioned a lot of sort of accessory units to the living space. Is there a potential that that would be a habitable space like a mother-in-law cabin or anything like that? Or is it just, just like storage or?
It's not intended or allowed to be used as habitable space. Folks will probably have TVs and couches in there and things like that, but it's technically not allowed to be used as habitable.
Okay. No running water or?
They, they do have, they do have the option to have running water. Some folks will have kitchens typically, so there may be a sink or something like that.
Okay. Thanks.
James?
No, my, my main concern was the hammerhead stuff. When, when we had originally talked about that, having access out. And it looks like you guys are talking to Sam about that and that was my only thing. So I appreciate that that's in the works.
No question, just interesting relocation of prairie dogs.
Yeah. Parks and Wildlife didn't ask about that one. So they're worried more about the swooping of the eagles. So no, I, I, I like, Ty, I appreciate you guys coming and bringing this and from the preliminary plan that you guys brought months ago. I think it fits well as a PUD for, you know, this long, narrow space. Cause I think, like you said, and pointed out that it's hard to fit something based on our current land use code with that. So we appreciate the, the creative look and the unique opportunity it allows Fruta. One question I have is, I know there was one in Moab. How for uses, I know people are probably seasonal. So how does that work as far as, I know you're talking about outdoor space, but there's certain times of the year it's probably not going to be used that much up here.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, realistically, these are snowbirds that'll be, be taking advantage of this. There'll probably be second lot owners. They may be someone who has a lot in another part of the country. And then, you know, another motor home lot here in Fruta and another motor home lot in another part of the country. So realistically, they'll be here, you know, in the nice season. Probably won't be here this time of year. There are no restrictions. I mean, if they were skiers and they like to go up to Powderhorn and things like that, they certainly could live in their motor home here in the winter. I think realistically, the market that's being targeted, there probably won't be a lot of activity there in the winter.
Will there, will there be an onsite manager all the time or is it, how does that work?
Not, there will not be an onsite manager all the time. The HOA will be represented by lot owners in the development. The developers local here lives right outside Fruta and has a, you know, participates in this type of recreational activity. So will be present and is local. But there will not be, there will not be like a designated person on the development at all times. I think realistically, there probably will be activity that will be overlapping and things like that.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? All right, Henry, we got to make two motions here, I know. So the first one is the ordinance, correct? Zoning this as a PUZ, PUD, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just for transparency purposes, that'd be great if we had two separate motions. One for the PUD guide or the ordinance. And then there could be obviously discussion like you normally would. And then after that, the preliminary plan. So once that's completed, I'll put the preliminary one, preliminary plan one up after this one.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance 2022-29, in ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately 4.9 acres of property located at 853 Raptor Road to a planned unit development zone as proposed.
I'll second that. All right, we've had a first and a second. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Hansi? Motion passes four zero.
All right, and our second motion is up is if anybody wants to make that.
I'll go ahead. I move that we approve the Raptor Crossing preliminary PUD plan with the condition that all review comments and issues identified in the staff report be adequately resolved with the final PUD plan application.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Hansi?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, well, thank you, Ty, for being here and we appreciate it and looking forward to seeing this come to completion. All right, with that, we're going to move into our legislative hearings. And so we've got now seven of them, it looks like. So our first one, an ordinance 2022-30, it's a second reading. It's repealing and reenacting chapter 5.04 of the Fruit of municipal code to comply with the Colorado law on sales and use tax. And we've got our finance director, city clerk Margaret Sell here to present.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Kate. Trying to be brief on this. The state recently passed a Senate bill which prohibits municipality from collecting a business license application or P for businesses, retail businesses that are located outside the city limits of the city, which is collecting sales tax. This was brought about really by the destination self-source tax, went into effect in 2019. Since that time, the number of people remitting sales taxes to the city of Fruta through the state have increased dramatically, requiring somebody that has a six cent sales tax, they have to collect and admit to us a for a $25 business license fee. Just, it's probably impractical. It's not been our practice to collect business license applications or fees from those establishments. The law really doesn't have a huge impact on it. We do have some businesses that are located outside city limits that we do have business licenses for. So there's probably about $2,000 in revenue we won't collect. We're not sending out renewal applications to those businesses. And I don't know how they actually got established as paying a business license fee and receiving a business license application from us in the past. It will still require anybody that does any kind of service, provide services in the city, like contractors, routine contractors, HVAC, mechanical, professional consultants, anybody that comes in and does a service in Fruta will still require a business license. But the retail establishment is located outside the city limits. They won't be required to have a business license with the city of Fruta. So our, our existing code really pretty much allowed for that. It had a provision in there that we can't collect a business license fee if it's not allowed by state or federal law. And in going through the code, there was a number of outdated provisions that've been in there since the dinosaurs and needed just a little bit of cleaning up. So there's provisions changed to allow the fee to be set annually by resolution of the city council, which has been the practice for a number of years. I just update the language to reflect that. It removes references to the city clerk as the person who issues the business licenses and substitutes licensing officer. There's an entirely new chapter that was adopted in 1997 that is entitled licensing officer. And so it just makes it consistent with language that's found in the title. Deb Woods issues the business license and will still be that, but under a licensing officer title rather than a deputy city clerk title. And then it also, there's a, a chapter that was adopted in 1997 that has the conditions and issuance of licenses, like you're required to post your license and we are required to check the zoning if it's a licensed location that's located in the city. And so those conditions are spelled out. And so just kind of referencing that section of the code that already exists and removing any conflicting provisions in the existing code. So it's kind of more of an update than it is due to the law change, but there is a law change that prohibits that as well.
All right, is that the rest of your presentation? Nope, we're going to open it up to public comment, then we'll come back to you. All right, with that, we're going to open up this to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none. Is there anybody online?
No comments online.
All right, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any questions or comments on this one? All right, here none. Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance 2022-30 repealing and reenacting chapter 5.04 of the Fruit of municipal code concerning business licenses.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Hansi?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, with that, now we're going to move into our second legislative hearing. It's ordinance 2022-22, 27, a second reading in ordinance of the city of Fruta amending chapter 15.28 of the Fruit of municipal code to adopt the International Energy Conservation Code. And we've got our planning and development director, Dan Kears, here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, this is ordinance 2022-27, second reading, adopting the 2018 Energy Conservation Code, just as a way of housekeeping, adopting codes by reference. According to the statutes 3116107, the actual text of the proposed ordinance in question needs to be read into the record. So for the record, this is an adoption of ordinance 2022-27 repealing and reenacting chapter 1528 of the Fruit of municipal code concerning the adoption of the International Energy Conservation Code, the 2018 edition as amended. Just for the record, the four amendments, which is kind of why you see the as amended at the end of that, of that titled ordinance is listed as A through D of the amendments, which concern records retention, the schedule of the building permit fees, the Board of Appeals and the duties of the code officials. So those, that's what's being amended out of the code. Just as way of context, the reason that this ordinance is before the city council this evening for consideration has to do with House Bill 20, or House Bill 221362, which was passed and signed into law by the governor in May of 2022, which essentially mandates that codes need to be adopted by June 1st of 2023 that are between June 1st of 2023 and July 1st of 2026. The way that building codes are typically adopted is through every other code cycle. So the jurisdictions in the valley have elected to go with the 2020 or the 2018 IECC, which is the International Energy Conservation Code. And then we'll go to the 2021, somewhere in between the July, July 1st and the July 1st concerning 2023 and 2026. And so essentially, we're just trying to match this up with the rest of the building codes that we adopt with every other code cycle. So right now you'll see that Mesa County has adopted and City of Grand Junction, Fruta Palisade, all the jurisdictions, mostly the 2018 residential code, IBC, which is the international building code, existing building code, plumbing and mechanical. And then we'll elect to go to the 2021 and 2024. The purpose behind that is that a lot of the new code adoptions or the new codes that come out of the International Council typically get tweaked. And then you kind of adopt the code cycle that's somewhat one removed from the latest and greatest. And that's kind of how they do the red lines and modifications to tighten up those codes just to make sure that they're reaching the intent. But the purpose for this is to get in before that July 1st, 2023. Otherwise, we automatically go to the 21, which should be inconsistent with the rest of the data. With that, that.
All right, with that, we're going to open it up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. Hearing none here, is anybody online?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions related to this item? All right, do we have a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance 2022-27 repealing and reenacting chapter 15.28 of the Fruit of municipal code concerning the adoption of the International Energy Conservation Code, 2018 edition as amended.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Hansi?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Williams? Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our next legislative hearing. It's resolution 2022-34 establishing the schedule for fees and charges for the 2023 budget year. We've got our assistant to the city manager, Shannon Vass, in here to present.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As always, thank you for the opportunity to present these four budget items tonight. Very exciting tonight with these four resolutions that will complete our budget for 2023, the next fiscal year and excited to have that done. So I want to thank city council for all of your hard work throughout this process, also our leadership team and all of the employees that contributed to the budget development throughout the year. So with that, just before getting into this first resolution, I just want to briefly recap budget timeline. As we've discussed kind of in the past, work on the budget starts fairly early in the year. We get together with our leadership team and start working on an updated five-year capital improvement plan. Earlier this year, we meant to discuss potential grants that we could apply for throughout the year, a few of which that we applied for and were successful in getting. So that was encouraging. And then from there on, we work with our department directors to come up with proposed budgets, all of the narratives that you read, really vet down requests from all the departments and then eventually bring a proposed budget to the city council. A lot of the work was done before that as well, but when we had our strategic planning session in August, council identified a number of key priority areas to include in the 2023 budget and upcoming budgets. And from there, we presented our first draft in September workshop. And for the last several meetings, as you know, we've had several budget presentations. So this is my last one and I'm going to keep on the trend as the previous agenda items and keep this relatively brief. So October 18th, we discussed capital projects and infrastructure and also core services. The workshop, we discussed outside agency funding and some miscellaneous items. November 1st, we covered quality of place and community wellness, also touching upon personnel and employee retention. And our last formal budget presentation was on economic health and development. And we also presented a summary of the all funds summary in the budget book. So tonight, to adopt the budget, we just have four items, which include approving the fees and charges, adopting the budget, appropriating the money for the 2023 budget and then setting the mill levy. So the first resolution before you is 2022/34, which is adopting the fees and charges for 2023. As was included in the cover sheet, a lot of the notable charges were highlighted there. And all of the changes can be seen in the fee schedule, which is attached to the cover sheet. We do have the fee schedule as attachment, but we also have additional attachment for the billing inspection fees to be implemented once the building inspections division is ready to go next year. So after opening up to public comments, staff recommendation is to approve resolution 2022-34, establishing the fees and charges for the 2023 budget year. And that concludes my first presentation, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Shannon. With that, we're going to open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none. Do we have anybody online? All right, hearing none, do we have anybody online?
We don't have any comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, um, with that, we're gonna close public account and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions regarding these, any of these charges or fees?
I do find it odd that unlimited trash is cheaper than limited trash, but.
That will be changing, I know.
No, I just, it's, when you look at the fee schedule, it just, it seems odd. That's reverse of what you would think it would be.
Does limited trash come with a trash can?
No, unlimited doesn't. You supply your own.
Yeah, limited comes with the ninety-six gallon container, and initially when waste management ruled that that was an option, they did charge a higher rate to provide those containers since they're providing them in lieu of.
More or less, you're renting the container.
I still find it odd.
I should rent mine out.
All right, is there any other, uh? Is there any other questions or comments, or do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty four establishing the fees and charges for the twenty twenty three budget year.
I'll second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Bremen. Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry. Counselor Hansi. Motion passes four zero.
Get done quicker without comments from council, just so you know, Shannon, you're doing a good job. Um, all right, with the next one, we're moving to resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty five, a resolution adopting the twenty twenty three annual budget. Um, and so we've got our assistant to city manager, Shannon Vasson, to present on this one.
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and city council. Uh, this resolution approves the twenty twenty three, uh, budget. I will just note that, um, this resolution approves what you see in the resolution, not necessarily the budget book. So as you're going through, uh, the budget book in the next few weeks, if there's anything you see, typos, grammatical errors, or maybe. Wrong years or anything like that. We've also been working with Councilor Hansi on adding a few additional graphs to help with transparency. You can send those over and we can, uh, uh, make those changes. We'll probably have a final budget done early next year, and then we'll print those off and have them. Bound and, uh, uh, put in a nice, uh, uh, binder for, um, anyone that's interested in having one. So this, uh, approves the budget, fiscal impact of the budget is thirty four point three million. Of that thirty four point three, you can see twenty seven million in current year revenues. Uh, four million, which is transfers between funds for capital projects, debt service, um, other transfers and two point eight million dollars. Use of fund balance between several funds, um, a few of the funds are spending at a deficit, uh, the general fund, Fruta Community Center Fund, Marketing Promotion Fund. As we've discussed in previous, uh, budget presentations. So again, um, after accepting public comment. Staff recommends, uh, approving resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty five, adopting the twenty twenty three annual budget. And that concludes my presentation on this item, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
All right, with that, we're gonna open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, is there anybody online that would like to speak on this item?
No comments online.
All right, with that, we're gonna close public comment and bring you back to counselor. Any, any questions or comments on this?
I appreciate all the hard work and that you guys have put into, and I really appreciate the conversations that we've had. In here and privately in, in meetings, I think we've had some good constructive, um, conversations and, and help with, like you said. Working with, trying with some, um, more, uh, transparent disclosures to help communicate what the budget's really, how, how to read the budget easier and. But I really appreciate, uh, the experience that I've had with you guys. Thank you.
All right, hearing none, is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty five, adopting the twenty twenty three annual budget.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we had a first and a second. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry. Counselor Hansi. Counselor Bremen. Motion passes four zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our next legislative hearing. It's resolution twenty twenty two dash three six, a resolution appropriating funds for the twenty twenty three annual budget. Shannon, you're up.
Uh, thank you again, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Now that the budget is approved, uh, city council is required to appropriate the funds. Um, as specified in the cover sheet. So again, after opening up for public hearing, uh, staff recommends appropriating funds. For the fiscal year twenty twenty three in accordance with the adopted twenty twenty three annual budget. That concludes my notes on this agenda item.
All right, with that, we're gonna open up to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this item? Our hearing down here, is there anybody online that'd like to speak?
No comments online.
All right, we're gonna close public comment and bring you back to council. Any questions or do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty six appropriating funds for the twenty twenty three fiscal year in accordance with the. Adopted twenty twenty three annual budget.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Cry. Counselor Hansi. Counselor Bremen. Counselor Williams. Motion passes four zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our resolution twenty twenty two dash three seven, establishing the property tax mill levy for the twenty twenty three budget. Shannon?
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is my last agenda item, uh, tonight, related, or related to, uh, the budget. So resolution. Twenty twenty two dash thirty seven establishes the property tax mill levy for the city of Fruta for twenty twenty three. Uh, we have no change at ten point one four six mills. Um, this has been the mill levy for as long as I can remember, I believe as long as Margaret can remember as well. Um, so no change from previous years. If we did want to increase, I'd have to go to a vote anyway, uh, due to tabor. So. Um, after a public comment, we recommend, uh, approving resolution, uh, twenty twenty two dash thirty seven. Uh, establishing the mill levy and then also allowing the city clerk to certify it with the Mesa County Commissioners.
All right, with that, we're gonna open up to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none here, are there any, anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're gonna close public count and bring you back to council. Is there any questions, comments, or do we have a motion?
Um, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty two thirty seven establishing a mill levy assessed on property in Fruta for the. Two thousand and twenty three budget year at ten point one four six mills for general operations and authorizing the city clerk to certify the. Mill levy to the Mesa County Commissioners.
All right, we got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Hansi. Counselor Bremen. Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry. Motion passes four zero.
All right, thank you, Shannon. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work on that one. All right, then we've got one more that we added during, um, I can't remember what it was, so. Uh, additional item, correct? Pulled the other one off.
We, we covered it. We had just moved the energy code from consent to the hearings.
All right, perfect. All right, we're good then. All right, with that, then we're gonna go into our city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, I'd, I'd like to also add just thanks, uh, for the budget process. Um, first of all, to each of you for guidance, direction, uh, I think. This was a, uh, you know, every, we do this annually, so it's a repetitive process, but one of the highlights I, I felt through this process was. That we had just come off of years of long-term planning, updating plans, and then also, uh, updating the strategic plan. Which really kind of sets forth a lot of guidance going into the document and then appreciate the efforts that each of you put in and. Throughout the discussions, the questions, the comments, the suggestions and, and things that I think have only helped us, uh, add more to the budget. But also just that clear direction helps us put together a, a sound budget e- each year and, and, uh, be able to communicate that to the public. I also wanted to thank, uh, as Shannon did, all of the staff. Um, this is a, a, a big team process, so, you know. Multiple teams within different divisions are putting together a lot of work to get, uh, requests and then department directors put in a, a ton of work. Vetting those and, and then working together to take all those needs within each department and consider the needs, you know, organization-wide. And then we come in from the city manager's office, working with that leadership team, taking the guidance from council and the public and putting that all together. Also, Fruity's just had a long legacy of sound budgets and, uh, thanks to Margaret Sell, who, who spent many years. Uh, leading the budget process and last year, putting, uh, twenty twenty two's budget together, worked with Shannon and then. Um, so I thank her and then, uh, a special thanks to Shannon, who did a tremendous job this year managing it, uh, on his own and. Uh, that transition has just been, uh, great to take a legacy and take it forward, um, in the future.
Is this like after tax day when all of a sudden I get the day after tax?
I did tell him that it tomorrow's a good vacation day he should use, uh, tomorrow, uh, so, um, but, uh.
Do we have to vote?
Appreciate all that.
Wrote it down, the floating, remember? You do on Juneteenth, you get it off.
But appreciate all that and, and all the work that went into, into that. We will, we have a, a, a news release that'll go out tomorrow and. Um, on our website as well, so, um, that information will, will go out to the media and the public and we'll continue to update the, the document as Shannon mentioned. Uh, another update we have for you, we have received the new iPads, we've received the new Apple pencils. Or are they pens or pens or pen, Apple pencils, and, uh, we are just waiting on the cases and the screen protectors. And then we, uh, should be able, by the end of next week, we should have them ready and g- and get them out to you. What we, what, if you.
Not too worried about it.
I'd like to have that.
You'd like to have that separation. If you'd like to leave your iPad tonight, um, we can, we can go ahead and start making that transition to the city iPad that, that you have. Otherwise, we'll, we'll just need to get that from you sometime, uh, so easy tonight if, if, if you don't need it. Um, we don't have a council meeting next week, so we looked at, this is a pretty good period of, of time to make that transition. And then, um, we'll, we will get those to you by the time, our goal is by the time the packets are ready for the next council meeting, by the end of next week. Um, I think one of the items will get here early next week, and then we can have it all together and we'll make that, we can change over your iPad for you and, and have it all ready to go. There's.
Me, Mike, and now I'm happy to leave it here.
Sure.
It's just, this is the, my primary source of email.
Right.
So, um. Does it matter if we keep it with us, cause?
I don't, I don't think it matters and what we can do. If you want to keep it with you for that, because that's important. Um, when we have the new one, uh, ready, we could just let you know and then we can make that transition.
Yeah, can, can I do that as well? Cause that, this is my only way of checking my email this way as well. So if you'll let us know.
We let, we'll let you know individually when we're ready for yours. Do a switch.
I get email on multiple devices, so I'm okay.
Well, we get email on all kinds, but this is, this is very specific to just this.
Somebody wants to do a records act, we can just.
The, uh, revamped gofruta.com, our tourism website, uh, was revamped and went live, uh, so if you have a chance to browse through that. We are internally and working with Colvita on, on, you know, s- some minor bugs that, that always are found after, after a live, uh, rollout. Um, but it, it looks nice and, and so check that out. We have two events this week I wanted to mention. The first is Thursday night is the reopening of the bike park celebration, and that's, it's a window of three thirty to five o'clock. However, um, I think around four o'clock, we will have the four thirty, yeah, sorry, four thirty. Will be when the mayor will make some comments, Mark Mancuso and, and the, uh, the groups that, um, participated in partnering and building that event. With all that said, there's a chance that weather could not allow that event to happen as planned. So right now, we have. Groups that will be coming in, there's bikes that people can try out, there's a lot of people doing tricks and, and some professional riders, uh, showing how. Um, how, how, how incredible the new park will be. Uh, but if it, we get too much moisture, we won't be able to ride on that. If that occurs, I know we, we, we kind of wanted to just throw out to you all, we could either try and reschedule for a different time and do the exact same thing. Or we could just do a more traditional, you know, kind of like a ribbon, ribbon cutting, but we want to have all of the, all of the display and. Kind of the fun event that we were planning on, but we are running into, you know, we're in December, so we, we, uh, wanted to see if you had any quick thoughts on that.
If my thoughts would be, we just do more traditional, because I mean, that way we're at least letting the public know, hey, it's.
It's open.
Open and ready to use.
You know.
It's he asking if, if the weather's bad.
Right, if, if the weather's bad, do we.
The weather's bad.
Do a big fanfare, or do we just want to say, hey, let's make sure the public knows it's open and we still have a smaller tube cutting, right? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, we could, we could, we could do a tube cutting like we've done in the past, so. Yeah, okay.
Well, that's what we've done, another, I'm bike related.
So rain, rain, snow or shine, we, we will have the event in one way or another Thursday, so, sounds good.
I've memorized my speech.
Great.
Ciara gave me the speech I'm supposed to speak. I don't know who wrote it, I just got an email, so.
Ciara, Ciara did it.
She obviously doesn't know me very well, because I usually don't stick to script very well, so.
I've told her that. We still, we still always give you one, but, um. Sam Atkins, uh, city engineer, and I attended a, a, a regional C dot meeting, or it was for Mesa County with. Uh, quite a few representatives of C dot this afternoon. Uh, the main thing of note in there related to us is the twenty road, uh, intersection realignment is planned. Uh, what they told us when we asked is planned for construction this spring, so spring of twenty twenty three, we should see construction occur there, so. Um, that's the next big C dot project close to Fruta. The others are like I seventy B and some others towards Grand Junction. Um, and then Parade of Lights is Saturday at five thirty, so just a reminder of the Chambers event, uh, Saturday Parade of Lights. And that's all the updates I have tonight.
Does the city have a float in there again?
You know, this year with some of our transitions and everything, we, we do not, unless somebody's surprising me that we have one.
All right, but we will have a judge. All right, you, you're judging, all right. Okay, I thought they weren't, no, no, that's, that's, um, Fall Festival. That was the judging issue, so. We're okay. All right, with that, we're gonna move in, he's, Matthew's going, what? No, um, moving into council reports and actions, so who wants to start? Ken, you look so excited about.
I haven't had any meetings as of late. Uh, I did want to ask, I was disc golfing. Uh, recently and saw that there's quite a. Uh, temporary encampment going on under the interstate there, it seems to be growing, and I'm not, I don't necessarily want us to like. Try to clear people out or anything like that, but it's probably right there where the sidewalk's gonna go when we get to that project, and it's also right next to. That place where everybody pulls out their paddle boards and kayaks all summer long, so we should probably think about how we want to handle that if it starts to. Grow and become a.
A problem.
And the, uh, what, what happens with those, depending on if it's public property. That obviously does not allow camping, or if it's private property that also doesn't allow camping, the police department typically makes contact and. And lets them know that it's, it's not for overnight and then, you know, but, but it. It continues to occur and that process continues to occur over time, but, but they usually, um, move along, uh, as soon as, uh, they get received that notice.
So did it seem like it had been established?
Looks like it's been there a little bit, yeah, they got like tarps or tents of.
You're, you're talking the, the three forty bridge over the river.
Yeah, it's on the north, north end of the bridge, right at the put in, take.
I'll, I'll follow up on that one.
Maybe it might warrant at least checking in with them.
Kind of pigging backing on what Ken said, are, do you know if GJ, or, uh, Grand Junction is starting to do their research? Um, if we'll be, uh, getting copies of the research on their problems and with, uh, homeless.
Yeah, we, we definitely, um, multiple items, including that one, kind of share the research studies and outcomes and. Follow along with each other.
I would love to get copies of that, just, uh, previous, with United Way, we did a lot of work on that and. So I've got some research from other communities, I'd just like to compare.
I, I'm just thinking, you know, yeah, let them know that they're not supposed to do that, but it'd also be nice if, if there are people who need resources to. To sort of point them in directions, and maybe they do that.
They, they do, that's part, that's part of our standard, uh, procedures with, the police department does a great job of making that contact, making sure they're aware of those. Services and, and how to get there and, um, we've even, uh, assisted with bus passes to get to some of those services, things like that in the past. And schedules and all that.
Yeah, definitely interested in hearing how that goes. Mike, can you bring, bring that back to us?
Update once we, yeah, kind of get to some.
And just out of curiosity, um, I mean, does any other member of council have any desire to hear, like, you know, I mean, do you guys know about two one one? And a lot of those other programs that are out there? If that's, two one one is a resource that, um. If that's, two-on-one is a resource that um it's a statewide, but it's somewhat regionalized in terms of if people are having problems with anywhere from making rent to food to caring uh for senior-level adults. It's a resource where you can call two-one-one like nine-one-one. You just call two-one-one and they will partner you with the resources that are available in the community and will often act as a case manager to say, you know, it's not just a singular issue. It may be multiple issues and here's all the resources and kind of help tie those together.
So I mean, that would be something, do we have resources on our website? I know we have some standard phone numbers like
Might be one we could add.
Yeah.
I think we, I don't, I'm
That way we have another resource.
Visible enough, we could
Right.
Right.
That'd be great. And so for council, if at any point we have a local community organization that we want to have come present, we just have to invite them and then
I just didn't know.
Something that we'd want more information from that's gonna help the members of our community, so.
I wasn't thinking of like actual individuals. I know not this Thursday. I think it's next Thursday, like uh the Food Bank of the Rockies is their grand opening. They've come in and presented, but is there any desire? I can't feel like I'm setting you guys up um for more of a Mesa County overview of how those resources, what resources are out there and kind of how they coordinate.
That'd be great to learn about.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, I can help set that up. I don't want to put that on staff. I can help with that.
Yeah.
I think any of those resources, if we can get, help get the word out.
Right.
Website or
Like two-on-one's a great one.
Yeah, we we also, we do have some handouts that are here at the Civic Center um because we often have uh we often will and have people come through the building and ask for those types of research and ask questions or have need, so we've kind of put something together that, you know, possibly looking at, we can always update and add more, but we do have those, just so you're aware that we often give out at the counter and to try and assist as well with.
I just don't know if you guys are familiar with like EFSP, emergency food shelter programs, kind of that sort of stuff. So, all right.
I think that'd be great to have a presentation here, if we could have something here and then, of course, welcome to community to come in here. I think that'd be great.
So I'll, if you want, I can kind of take the lead on getting that started, so we don't add that to staff.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, just let us know. I mean, really, it could be any meeting at the beginning, right? And so if if
Like fifteen minutes? Would it be at a meeting or at a workshop? What what would make the most sense?
And
It doesn't matter either way. I mean, if we want, well, if you want public here.
Meeting would be great for public. Is that the thing there?
I mean
Shop, just to kind of bring it to us in the beginning and we could talk about it and then see if we want to move it to something like that.
That's
Looking to you. I I think either one is appropriate. Yes, that's where I'm at. So you do the research and then bring it back to us and then we can
Happily do so.
We're inviting, yeah, pick a date.
Okay, we'll do. I'll take that one.
All right, well, since you're already talking, why don't we go into your council reports then?
Uh sure, uh we did have a G-Jet meeting. Um not a whole lot to cover. There was an interesting presentation, which I see uh Mike copied everybody on by Dr. Nathan Perry, which was the economic impact of outdoor recreation uh for Mesa County. Um just the quick numbers, labor, it's about a hundred and thirty-one million uh to the economy, GDP's one ninety, so total output's about three hundred and eighteen million. So in terms of the impact, so percentage-wise, the state, now I'm going from memory, it was three point eight one percent of our local economy, which is slightly higher than the rest of the state, but I'm kind of going from memory on that one.
Yeah, I'm not, uh but you're, yeah.
Yeah, so.
It it's amazing. It was not tracked as GDP um until some laws changed a few years back or um and I think it surprised everyone how large of a of a contribution it is, but that's taking multiple outdoor industries together.
Yep.
You said that Mike sent this out as an email?
Yes, um it was notes. Yeah, there was a PowerPoint.
I sent a few presentations and and one email that just kind of laid out last week.
Yeah, he sent it out on Friday, community reports for your information.
Oh.
So that's pretty good. And you know, uh like Mike says, Saturday, we have the Parade of Lights at five thirty. So I'll be judgy Mcjudgy out there, bundled up. And uh no poop circles, so we'll have those at next Fall Fest.
All right, with that, James, you're Circles are off.
Tourism is canceled for a couple of months. It looks like we don't really have much. Um I had to finally just come to the realization that museum board was not working out for me time-wise ever. And so after talking with Mike and with Aaron, Aaron has graciously taken over that role, which is nice, because I think we needed another one for Aaron anyway. And then yeah, they're supposed, they're supposed to be a move of something.
Yeah, tonight.
And we had talked about that, but so maybe we can we can revisit them. And um the other one, we don't, we had to have, I haven't went to anything for, um and I was told that I didn't really need to, but I'm gonna try and make an effort in the next couple ones that they do. Um Commissioner Davis reached out and said that we get to vote on stuff, so I think there's something that he specifically wants me to show up for, so other than that, no. Yeah, he said we have a voting membership, so. And he's like, I haven't seen. Yeah.
Yes.
And so he reached out to me specifically and wants me to attend with him next one, so. Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say. I kind of like that idea, because I don't really know what I'm getting into and so, but yeah, other than that.
All right, Aaron.
I don't have it.
All right, I got a couple of things on there. Um I got the paperwork for Deb. We're gonna appoint Stephen to Parks and Rec. Point just to the Planning Commission, who we interview tonight. Uh I think both are great candidates for each respective board. Um I want to, I'll thank the four of you guys for being at the Christmas party. I think that's probably the best attendant in council that we've had.
Poor Aaron didn't even get me.
I was the first one to not get some prime rib. But I like, I got a lot of mashed potatoes, though.
It was a high carb night.
Yeah. So I got, I got a piece of cake. I got to pick my cake because I I I saw the issue. I'm like, all right.
Want a cake next?
Yes.
Did want to want to win one of the vacation days.
I know. So I wanted to win, wanted to give to Matthew, because I said he wanted to take over my role here one night, so.
It could.
I haven't given you the opportunity. Well, no, I did give you that opportunity once to run and do that, so, but no, I appreciate it, because I know in the past there's been low attendance from council, and I think it's, Mike would probably agree, it says a lot to staff to see council there. So I appreciate that. Um Mike and I, he did put that in the Friday report. We got to talk to the Girl Scouts last week, so that was always one of the highlights of some of what about what we do as, you know, local government. Um the other one, um and I think, Mike, you let me know. Did they put the signs up at Snooks?
So they've um, they were supposed to be in. I don't know if they got them in today or not, but they they had ordered them last week. They were supposed to be done by the end of yesterday and then um but yeah.
Everybody knows Snook signage wasn't consistent with the leash requirement, because we, I know Ken knows that. I don't think you were on when council said there's no leash required at Snooks, but all of our signs said leash required, and so we had some issues. Well, all of a sudden, somebody in the community sent me photos saying, hey, this one says no leash required and right next to it says leash required, so. So I appreciate Mike getting with the staff, because I mean, it's
One
Less than a week and we're pretty much gonna get that taken.
Yeah, one
That one required there, right?
It's under it, the language we came up with, whenever, I mean, that was a while back, was under dogs must be under control. And that's how one sign was corrected, but two weren't, so, or we found out that or or had been ripped off or because they were just taped, so we just ordered new signs that just have it very clear and
There's no other signings around the lake that we
Right. Correct, yeah.
All right, so I just appreciate you guys getting on that, taking care of that.
Is there any way that we can put an update on the website that, like, because that has been kind of a argument back and forth with people that we could just state that Snooks is leashless.
Yeah, weekly question of the week.
We're gonna, we have it set for
The argument.
Is it this week?
We just wanted the signs to be fixed before we put it out. Yeah, but yeah.
Thank you. Just some sort of mention, because I know there's been an argument.
Then we're gonna make it the FAQ as long as the signs are installed, so.
And I think that was the question, because the person that contacted me was upset because they get in arguments down there on whether the dog should be on a leash and other people are saying yes.
Be honest, they were both right, right? It wasn't wrong.
Yeah.
You know, it's true, so it would be nice to really clarify that.
Well. What, Catherine's not right and you're not right?
No, I'm never
Both can't be right.
I haven't been right in twenty years.
Keep my mouth shut.
I will happily go on record. I haven't been right in twenty-two years. No problem admitting that.
All right.
That lines, um I appreciate.
Not being right? No, 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 no.
No, um staff, um acting on things very quickly, I think Matt, you brought up last meeting, uh the memorial here in in the front yard need some TLC and you guys, I saw that, I heard the power wash in one day and saw that it was um being cleaned up and I really, really appreciate you guys doing that.
Gonna get any touch-up paint, do you know?
I I just asked, I just told them to, i- it it's a it's a joint partnership that uh there were a small group helped to get it put together, but we do maintain them to a certain degree, and so I just let them know that we needed to get on that and uh, you know, as as soon as they could work it in, they have some priorities that they were doing, so um yeah, I'm sure.
It's an item of note, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Who who's
To be a, yeah, if there needs to be like a paint touch-up and we're working with someone else, maybe it's something that we coordinate with them in the in the spring when the weather's a little better and and kind of have a little, a little party to commemorate and do some service.
Can we shoot the cannon too?
Yes, that would be sweet.
Right across. Appreciate that.
Some of you Cannon was taken. I said, some of you might remember when the cannon was taken and we had to get it back.
Really? Wow.
No.
Yeah, Mr. Story uh drove off with it and took it in the Grand Junction. He took it, it was in the Grand Junction Parade and then uh
Really?
And it got some TLC and put back.
That is funny.
Oh, oh, I can see him being the one that would do that.
Little quick borrow.
Yeah.
Who who spearheaded the the lights? Like who part of the crew spearheads putting up the Christmas lights?
Um so so the parks, the parks department as a whole put, really gets in there. Art got that started years ago. But um the crew did it this year and uh I think they were saying uh Tina spent quite a bit of time in the downtown.
Tina is phenomenal. She does a lot of really good stuff, but I just wanted to commend him on it, because I
Thank you.
Gosh, that's a lot of work and it looks amazing and already hearing people talk about it. And and I didn't get to go on the day that it was unveiled, but them coordinating the lighting with Santa going down the road as they were supposed to. But that was pretty, that was pretty phenomenal.
That is cool.
It would say, that's his name, he's Santa.
No Saint Nicholas.
I'll pass that on. They
But for really, yeah. So they did a great job and being able to coordinate, that is really cool to add that, I think, was neat.
Or anybody else want to add to my report? All right, hearing, hearing no more comments, uh it is now eight forty-five and we will adjourn.
We were just making your report more interesting.